This is a test of the City Block Audio System.
The United States of America and to the Republic by which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible,天地一縷
This pastor opinion is not, so we're going to do an interview. Um, in the case, heaven father, thank you for this day, O God, and thank you for all what you do for our great city. Father, we ask that you guide us with wisdom, um, give us the knowledge that we need to do all these cases before us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Roll call, Ms. Kreis.
Thank you. Jim and Hillebrew.
Here.
Vice Chairman Barnes.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Deloge, uh, Mr. Chair is absent for the record, however, needs an excused absence. Mr. Wallace is absent. Ms. Rolfe.
Here.
Ms. Wilkman.
Here.
And Ms. Owens.
Here.
We do have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. Um, approval of the minutes from February 7th, 2023.
Make a note where you approve the minute.
Mr. Carroll, second.
Fishes in second. All those who favor, do you have a say now?
Aye.
All those opposed. Yes, members, I don't want to do wrong. Oh, oh, I did, I'm sorry. Any person wishing to appeal any decision made by the planning board with respect to any matter considered as such meeting will need, will need a record of the proceedings. And for the purpose may need, for such purpose may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings made, which, which record includes testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based, for our statute 286 dash zero one zero five. Persons with disabilities, uh, I don't agree with that, sorry, I went too far. Thank you. We've already done the approval minutes. Um, is there anybody in the audit expedition just gave comments to anything to the planning board? Other than what I told them the planning board has given? Can I say none? We'll move on. We'll move on to the regular public business. Ms. Walsh, the case is 23 day zero one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Walsh Planning Director. This is a request to annex point approximately point nine acres into the city of Blacka for the purpose of connecting to the city's water and sewer system. Um, there, there was hesitation there because the, uh, initial application included two separate parcels. After the Stafford report. After the Stafford report was written, the applicant was in the process of combining the parcels, and so the acres changed just a little bit. And it varies between point nine two and point nine seven, depending on the site plan or the property phasers records or the. Yeah, so you get the idea, but it's approximately point nine acres. Um, the future land use map from, would be amended from Putnam County Commercial to City of Palaca Commercial. And the request is to rezone from Putnam County Commercial Light C two to City of Palaca Intensive Commercial District C two. The application, um, the parcel is located on the northeast corner of State Road nineteen and Tolles Avenue. Please tell me if I was pronouncing that correctly. Tolles?
It depends on where you're from. I call it towns.
You do. I call it towns.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're all good. We all know what you.
Very good. Um, the, uh, again, the purpose of the request is to connect the city water and sewer services and construct a restaurant. Staff is reviewing the site plan for the restaurant at this time. Um, the subject parcels are currently vacant, but had structures on them at one time, and parcels around them are not within the city limits of Palaca. However, State Road nineteen, that right away was annexed into the city around nineteen eighty-seven. Um, staff will stand for any questions that you might have.
Have any questions, Stan? Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this? Good.
The applicant is present.
Okay, or you the applicant? Do you, do you have any questions to the applicant? Wow.
I know.
Yeah, we will, they. Um, okay, both are speaking. Um, is there, go ahead, motion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I will move that we, uh, approve the annex of one five fourteen and about ten towns into the city.
I think.
Motion in second, same discussion. Being none, I'll call for a review. All those in favor this amendment, or in the front, I don't say aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed. As it is. Thank you very much. Oh, just the three quarters?
Three quarters.
Okay, yes, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend the future land use map from Putnam County Commercial to City of Palaca Commercial.
Second.
Here is, motion in second, there is discussion. All those in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. I have it.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we, uh, rezone this parcel from Putnam County Commercial, General White C two to City of Black Commercial Intensive C two.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Hearing motion in second, all those approve, whether there is discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Mr. Pastor, yeah, we're still. The three quarters, right? Congratulations.
All righty. You ready?
Ready, you know.
Yeah.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes, sir. Um, the next case is, uh, in a front, a request to amend the future land use map. Um, it's a very large piece of property. It is being postponed to April because I misadvertised the caption in the paper. I didn't get the, uh, land use and zoning correct. I transpose them.
I'm eager to give me a trouble.
Um, I, anything to make you happy, sir? Um, the applicant is en route. They should be here any moment. If you have questions, you're welcome. I would defer to her. But, um, I will be doing a brief description of the project in the upcoming staff presentation that I have for you, private presentation.
So, if we're going to postpone it, do we need even, I don't know, maybe we can tack it here. Do we need the name to hear from her or what?
Um, I have refused, Mr. Chair. I'm thinking for us to move forward. Ms. Walsh and I talked about it. We want to talk with them, you know, outside of this meeting, but since this thing was phoned and not been heard at this meeting, then no, don't want to be very.
Okay. For, uh, the favor of all the rest of the board, I'd say we move on to the next business at hand.
Project presentation. So, this is a, a synopsis, a summary of the projects that have occurred throughout two thousand and twenty-two and through the end of January. I'll be doing an updated presentation for the commission on Thursday night, but it will be much more brief than this one. Um, because it will only cover, obviously, February. So, um, during the twenty twenty-two, we submitted the annual certified local government report. What is this one? I do what? I thought you said your job. For the record, I've never seen someone throw a whip to the pointer. So, the certified local government report is something that is required to be submitted every year to the state in order for us to keep that status. That status allows us to apply for grants, um, from, from the D E O, the Department of Economics Opportunity. Um, you'll see in the net, in another slide, that, um, one of the things that we've received a grant for as a result of this certification was to update our historic preservation, cultural resources survey for the historic districts in both, or both historic districts, north and south. Next slide, please. Thank you. One of the projects you've probably seen under construction right now is Aspen Dental. It's at the site of the former King Buffet on State Road nineteen. Demolition was completed at the end of January, and I drove by there today, and we've got block almost all the way up to the roof system, ready to um, top it off. Next project, next slide, please.
Aspen Dental, not that one by Walgreen?
In Walgreens.
In, in, yeah, so what do you know about that? I don't know.
Hopefully, we get our.
No, not in it.
Yeah. Uh, yeah.
Those are the three quarters.
For Walgreen.
Producer.
Yeah. Checkers on Krill Avenue is almost complete. That should be open, I think, in the next couple of months. Next slide, please. Um, the other thing that we just transmitted at the be, uh, beginning of the month was the capital improvements element for our comprehensive plan. That's something that is required to be done every year, but I don't think it's been done since two thousand and eight, which is, that's not a good place to be as far as the state's concerned. Um, but it was transmitted. It's under review. They've got sixty days to review it, and it'll come back um, to the commission after that for adoption. Next slide, please. The cottages at St. John, if you guys have heard about this before, one hundred ninety-four duplex market rate rental units.
They wiped everything out down there.
Did they have comments?
Yes.
Oh, fair enough. I was going to ask, did they, they wind up keeping that tree in the back?
Yes, sir. I was out there on site last week on Friday, and a Friday afternoon, they retained all of the trees that they said they were going to, with the exception of a few that I had to go out. It was right along the edge of, um, the drainage man on the east side, and those trees, they, they were not placed correctly on the survey, and so they, they are in the place where buildings are going to be constructed, so they'll have to be removed. However, their, um, tree mitigation schedule on their site plans was way over the minimum requirement, and I don't think that they're going to be out of compliance whatsoever as far as that's concerned.
Did they plant some trees up the side down here?
Yeah, I would love to know where these things came from. Um.
The border.
They can't.
Oh, indeed, okay. Where are they going?
The rich man's house.
That would be on David's plantation in Kansasville.
Plantation.
David, where is that?
They're just south of Jacksonville. Still, uh, David's family that own, um, Windix.
Oh, okay. Okay. Wow, that's pretty impressive. Very impressive.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Um, one of the other issues that they ran into was, um, the large tree that they are, that they redesigned for. The curb that is proposed to come through there is going to approach on the hurt line a little bit, and so they're going to be hiring an arborist to do some root print, root pruning and uplifting of the tree, and also, um, additional fertilizers and, and things to help the tree, to help reduce stress on the tree as they work around it. The grading around that area won't be changed significantly, so it's pretty, it's a pretty good bet that the tree will be just fine. It's just going to be, look a little different. Um, but they are going great guns. They've dug a huge hole in the ground for their stormwater. It's seventeen feet deep. Pretty amazing to sit around there and see it. Wow. Um, right now, the county is also working on St. John's Avenue right there in front of their parcel, so if you do want to go by there, you have to come in, um, type three oh nine through Francis by the ballpark area. Yeah.
That stormwater's going to be underneath their driveway, the parking area?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
The stormwater, you said seventeen feet, is that on the property?
Yes, it's on the property. It's in the center of the property, so it's going to be their center piece of the whole. Everything's going to come around it. Okay.
So, it will be like a mere retention or detention on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, the next project is the one that we had to postpone, but it's, um, Crystal Cove R B Resort. So, it will be, um, approximately four hundred R B sites. That would be the maximum number of R B sites, and then fifty, um, primitive or rustic camping sites. About sixty-five acres of that hundred and seventy-seven acres is, um, developable. And that's where all the development will take place. The rest of it will be conservation, is planned for conservation. Okay. Next project, please. Elian, let's drive through. Coffee is proposed for, um, the parcel, little tiny parcel between Wind Dixie and the racetrack on State Road nineteen. That's under review.
There is now a pond?
That's what I was just going to say. They have also committed to repairing the pond that happens every time it rains when you try to go into racetrack.
But what I'm actually saying is that we're retention pond in there, and that, I mean, where it ponds as a parking lot, driveway, all that, that will be right in there?
No, it's that, it's that piece that Kramer, it's right there next to, um, Wind Dix, I mean, uh,
Pizza Hut.
Pizza Hut. And the back of it has that, that retention or detention.
Okay.
So, there is half, you know, right there.
I'm with it.
Right. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, this is the cultural resource survey that I mentioned earlier that we received a grant for. We have gone out, went to bid, and secured a consultant to handle that. We had a kickoff meeting for it last week, and they should be going out into the neighborhoods, probably the week after next. So, if you see people out there, you get questions about people out walking around, taking pictures of houses in the historic district, that's everyone out there, and we will be posting notices to that effect on our social media and some other places. It's to let people know what's going on. They'll be, they'll have badges and vests and hats identifying themselves. So, if you, again, if you have any questions about that, please let people know. Okay? Next slide, and, um, we just recently passed an impact fee for the city, and that will go into effect May, probably late May. After May sixteenth, it will go into effect.
So, any permits pulled after May in the city of Palaca will be different.
That's correct. Correct.
It's a fee.
Sir?
What's the fee?
It depends on the construction. If it's a single-family residence, it should be about sixty-five hundred to seven thousand dollars. For all the difference in that fee.
And that includes the thirty-five that hook up water.
No, it does not go up in additional. That's correct. Okay. Next slide, please. All of them probably heard about Longhorn Steakhouse.
You can wait until you come in.
I know you heard about that. Okay, okay. Um, they have demolished the building that in full.
Did you see the demolition school?
Yeah, they have demolished the building. They're working on the site. Um, and they are adjacent to, um, Chris, thank you, Chris. Well, I was trying to be. And. So, yeah, so Crystal is, is near immediate north, and Wawa is north of them. But, um, they expect to be open by, they are saying November.
I heard October.
Yeah.
Really tall.
I hope so. I hope so. I wish them the best. Um, next slide, please. And Scooter's, as you know, is already open, and they're going great guns in their business, and that is on State Road nineteen, just north of St. John's Avenue, and next to the Chinese restaurant there.
And the tangible waffle sandwich.
Do they? Oh, my. Okay, aren't they marked with Krill Avenue? Yes. That was just St. John's Avenue. Yeah, they are, just north of St. John.
No, they're both of the.
Yeah, my apologies. Okay.
All right, it's the toll road. Ledge.
There you go.
I got it. Okay, um, some other places in town have done some pretty major renovations, the top of it all on Krill Avenue, nothing done. Their renovation is almost complete. They've got a couple plus items that they need to address, and that'll be that, but they're open and underway for their business. Next slide, please. Charger Supply has added this, um, covered outdoor greenhouse, and that should be, that is complete. And so now Walmart is planning a seven thousand square foot addition to the west side of their building to accommodate grocery pickup services. That is, uh, there's, there, I had, they haven't started construction, but their plans have been approved. Next slide, and you all know about the Wawa. But they're also going great guns. They're working out some stormwater issues right now between them and Longhorn, but I'm sure they'll figure it out, and it'll move forward quickly.
So, may I ask a question? Now, I don't know if that or not, but I was going to be curious. Um, at the corner, are they going to have an out parcel or somewhere on that, on that property too? When I say out parcel of the building, because they have, they have a sign out front. It means you're building, everybody says you're building a Wawa, but then they have a sign out front that says available.
That will be, that's an interesting question. It wasn't on their site plan.
But, but it's, I mean, literally right on the corner. Real estate sign says available.
I'll have to ask them about it, too.
Yeah, sure. I had to ask them about it. Okay, so this is the summary of the, the data from two thousand and twenty-two. We had over two hundred and twenty cases that we did, that we ran through. That included, um, billing permits, cases that went before the planning board, and zoning verification letters, as well as some historic preservation cases. We collected about a little over forty-two thousand dollars in keys fees. And of those cases that we looked at, eighteen of them were single-family residences. We had seven annexations, fifteen lot splits, thirty-one certificates of appropriateness, and, um, forty-eight new businesses came into the city during two thousand and twenty-two. The two thousand and twenty-two B T R or Business Tax Receipt Revenue is a hundred and twenty, a hundred and two thousand dollars. Um, staff has been working diligently on collecting late B T Rs and, um, renewals that just were not completed last year, so we're going great guns on that. It's good to have people working on it. Next slide, please. Um, future planning projects, these are things that, it's kind of my, like my wish list. We, um, do have money in the budget this year to update our comprehensive plan, and out of that update will come a, a new set of land development code regulations, an update of our whole entire zoning code, but that will happen in, probably, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, also on the wish list is a long-range transportation plan. That's something that will help with grants, um, that would come from the state and F D O T, as well as possible, um, F D E P grants. We are required to have a water supply plan in our comprehensive plan that the, the water manager district. We are required to have a water supply plan in our comprehensive plan that the, the water manager district has told me a couple of times now that we need to be doing it, but I'm working on getting a grant for that. Addition as well. It would be a similar project as the capital improvements element. In that we would have to have someone else do it for us. And then um, the concurrency that goes hand in hand would be impact fees. So the reason we have impact fees is so that we can. Plan for and pay for future capacity improvements generate that will be needed because of new growth. And that's all about concurrency. So that's what our concurrency is all about and we will have to be um, tracking the number of trips on our roadways. And that was in the C I E, the capital improvements element. Um, in that element, it noted that. Krill, parts of Krill Avenue by the community, um, county government center and also. State Road one hundred, right through here, through town, are both operating at loan service E and F. So they're about to fail completely. They're, they're packed. The traffic's hardly moving at sometimes during the day. And um, concurrency would help us pay for those improvements. Those are state roads, but the state doesn't pay for everything. As you can imagine. Um, some of the things that we've got going right now. Our document scanning. We, we leased a big, large format plotter and scanner where we can scan all the old maps and documents that are across, across the street of the annex. And get rid of the paper and have it documented electronically so that we can search things and access them that way. We're also looking at improving our website and doing mapping improvements. There's some, a lot of corrections that need to be made on the zoning. And um, future land use layers that the property phasers and the county uses and generates. And that's something else that we're working on. And that from my half, from my update, sorry about the concern.
Thanks, Ms. Walsh.
Uh, Ms. Wilson, have a question?
Chair, can I?
Yes, ma'am.
So, good. Do you have so far a lot of pushback with the impact fee?
Not much. Not much. Every community around us charted some.
Right.
Except for part of the county course. Um. But there, it's something that's the only way we're going to be able to afford those capacity improvements. So, for example, right now our water treatment plant is at fifty percent capacity, which means we have to start planning for. Addition, additional capacity. Very soon. Okay.
Any further questions, Ms. Walsh? In common? Yes, Ms. Tom.
No.
Well, that makes, okay. So now we will move on to. Uh, what is it? Revision of planning board duties and discussions and recommendations?
This is something that I would like to discuss with you. Um. The possibility of morphing or. Excuse me, combining the zoning board of appeals with the planning board. So instead of having to manage two separate boards, you all would act. In two separate capacities. You would do your regular planning board duties, but then also act as a quasi judicial. Body to make zoning board of appeals decisions. For example, if a company were to come in and ask for additional signage. That's not permitted by our code and they ask for a variance, that will come before you. However. Particularly for signage variances, our code says that it's not really permitted because. Um, it's something that the applicant has created. It's not, a zoning, a variance is typically for something that is not created by the applicant. If there was a boundary, something or whatever that changed or somebody built their house too close to the, within a setback or something like that and, and now there's. Not enough space for the house next to it, whatever, variance could be asked for that because it wasn't caused by. It was caused by someone previously that hadn't been acknowledged. Um. But again, it would be something that would, that would. Be combined with you guys. There would be one less board for us to manage as far as having meetings. Um. And I think it would be, it would streamline things.
Is there a board right now that's doing appeals?
There is, but it hasn't met in over five years. Is that right? Over five years?
What's that? I've heard of.
Yeah.
Is there people on that board that are, I mean?
Yes.
I'm on it.
Yes. Ms. Kitchen is on it as well as some other people. Hmm.
And they just can't get a quorum to make decisions and?
They haven't convened. They haven't been asked to. Let me speak. Ma'am? Sure. Sending that some information.
Hi, I'm Asper Clark. I wanted to mention one thing. It is very difficult to ask people to volunteer for a board that doesn't meet regularly. So we do struggle with vacancies on this board. Um, and. While planning continues to amp up with the amount of cases that they're experiencing, over two hundred and twenty-four in one year, which. As far as I've been affiliated with the city, I haven't heard of two hundred and twenty-four being in one year. The, the chances of us having an appeal of the decision of the planning director. Uh, the chances of having a variance is going to be more likely. Um, but do we think that it's something that's needed to have a board fully, fully volunteered on? All of the time? Not necessarily. So that's why the planning department is asking you guys if you would take on these duties rather than us having to. Keep volunteers on a second board that wouldn't meet but once for every five years. And their term is actually five years. So I'm asking people, hey, would you sign up for a board that may meet once in your term? As you can imagine, it's been difficult for me.
And so it's not a conflict. I mean, if we're doing something and then.
Yeah, so maybe. Then are they gonna feel what we decide or?
You would be hearing, uh, you may want to.
It's a, it's a possibility, but unlikely.
And then we.
Because it's a, because as a zoning board, you would be quasi judicial. Um, which means that everybody has to be sworn in.
Um, and then the meeting would go like a planning board meeting and then we would close the planning board meeting and open up a meeting.
Oh, okay, right. Okay.
It would be similar to the public hearings that you see at the commission level, except it's appellate in nature, which would mean that the chair or the bystander would ask someone to be sworn in prior to them getting any testimony to the board.
And there are many communities around the state that combine these boards and they act in the same capacity.
And I can add to that. Some of the newer commit, uh, communities such as the town of Indian Town, which was recently incorporated, they've started off with a planning and zoning board rather than it being two boards.
So. We would, I mean, the, the D two board would you? Converge? And so how many people do you have on the other board that are, are, I know, I know you're a, a leader.
Marshall Lane and I forgot who else.
Well, we're not asking to combine and have like fourteen people. I think that that's unmanageable. Hmm. I think that. Perhaps one or two more, but ideally no more than seven.
Okay. Uh, but I thought I asked you to our board, I mean, this board not fully. Um.
Stat.
Stat, thank you.
We have seven, don't we?
We do, but I think we've got nine.
Right. But even nine can be a little cumbersome. So I'm looking for your thoughts on that and um.
I'll say compliments. I'll.
It seems almost like it would be, that would kind of, it would be together too. Yeah, okay. Okay, Mr. Barnes?
Barnes giving a thumb up. I don't have a issue with another than I got a rainbow or Luca labor.
You also got a rainbow. The other zoning board members, we have not been talked to about, and asked about it or discussed it this came up here a couple of years ago, but it was a very controversial issue.
You want to step to the podium and speak to Elizabeth?
And I don't think so. Um, also this department has to go before the commission and the, um, ordinance would have to be amended and this would be a process. This is just, you know, some. Thoughts on how to feel about it, whether you'd be open and amenable to it. Or then.
You know, since we're short two people. If there, if there are four members over there, why would we ask them if they want to volunteer?
Hmm.
Why not, you know? Involve those two or three or whatever.
Hmm.
I lead the kitchens ten twenty-seven South, Felt Street, Blackwood, Florida. Uh, I keep one of the zoning board of appeals probably around two thousand and fifteen. When there was a rule under my previous planning director who was ousted by the commission for various reasons. I won't stay in public. Uh, he wanted, he was mad at the zoning board of appeals because they rejected him changing parking lots from the large-sized cars to the compact homes. He took it to the commission and the commission overturned the zoning board of appeals. And so he moved in, he took a lot of turn duties, he put it under your board. He tried to get rid of the zoning board of appeals. He asked the city commission to dissolve it. I, Marshall Lane and several others spoke against it because I feel that the, the citizens of Blackwood need to have more than one off avenue of appeal. I got on the board and the commission was saying there wasn't anybody on the board that needed, needs somebody on the board, so I volunteered to the zoning board of appeals. And yes, obviously, Ms. Tom is very right. It's, it's, so many things have to be changed. It does have to go to the commission. But I am against it because I don't think that the people's life, the repressed government needs to be less than. We need probably more boards, not less, but the zoning, we, we, if we don't feed that, what's the problem? And as far as the two hundred and twenty-five buildings, once the impact fee comes in, all the bad developers will fall away and they will get good developers and probably drop me on the probably a hundred. And we'll get prime developers that know, if you have an impact fee, you have a good government takes care of it and they come here. And that's a direct quote from a developer who wanted to do the money, the money area. But yeah, I'm one hundred percent against it. I know Marshall Lane is, she's speaking for herself. She's spoken to the city commission being against the other board members. And that's what I think about it. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Kitchen. So actually, I mean, you're just, you're asking for our opinion and, and maybe support of what you're asking.
Hmm.
And then moving it on to the legal realms of everything through the city council. Okay. Well, I think you've got your answer for the board here. Uh, you know, I think that um, if you want to move it on forward from us. You know, that um. In, I mean, we didn't really understand what you were asking. And uh, you know, I, I agree with Ms. Kitchen in the sense that in the, the legal terms that are of appeals forward since you didn't know the board, but um. If you're adding that, that to us. You don't have another avenue. Past us. When we're, we put our planning board hats on, we start that. Turn, and we put the appeals board, coming zoning board hat on, just turn my hat around and says, chair of the, of that. So um. Yes, Ms. Bar.
Um, just to reiterate what Ms. Walsh said, my understanding would be very, very, very convincing that where both boards would convene on the same topic. I hang on top of that unless I'm wrong. Uh, any of our decisions can go to the commission for final appeal. So there is another avenue. Not, not to contradict anything, but um, I served on. The zoning board of appeals or approvals for the county. Um, I believe this is a similar concept. Um, and it is, it's very different in nature. So I would request if we tackled this, we have a little background information presented to us on, you know, codes and. And all the stuff that we need to make, a little bit of decisions. Um, but other than that, I've got no objection.
Need you, Barbara? Very little comment. Then we'll talk about anything else, but. Tom? You have anything to say?
Um, just uros to planning.
Yes.
And for. And you guys do their job.
Thank you.
It's so good to be.
It's always nice to have you, Ms. Tom, now that you're leaving us. Yeah.
Now that we got forty-five more days. Um, there anything else that we need to discuss about this one?
No, sir.
Good. I believe that is our last statement.
Hmm.
Okay. Um. Chance, you have anything you got to say?
Nothing further. I don't think we could have started on.
Yeah. You have anything you got to say?
Good.
So. Ms. Bar. So. Can I have the, uh, motion to adjourn? Very much adjourned on the September app. I, we ordered.
Thank you very much.